Hello again, everybody, and welcome to another Inside Lowell Podcast. I am your host, Teddy Panos, coming here from the Well Point Studios here in downtown Lowell. Unicare is now Well Point, new name, same commitment to Massachusetts and to its members. At Well Point, your whole health is their whole point. And we thank our friends at Well Point for helping to make this podcast possible, all of our podcasts possible. Also want to give a quick shout out to the rest of our sponsors here who sponsor our Inside Lowell Podcast. Of course, we start with our friends at Washington Savings Bank. Now's the time to make the switch to Washington Savings Bank. TMI Properties, the newest member of the Inside Lowell families. From affordable to luxurious apartments for all. Boston North Company Restaurant and Retail Solutions from a local company. Mahoney Oil, providing warmth and protection since 1925. Francis E. Preventure Insurance, the agency Greater Lowell has trusted for over four decades and by the Massachusetts Pirates, bringing all the action and excitement of arena football to the Songus Center in downtown Lowell. Thank you to all of them. Thank you as well to my special guests here, joining us here on this Inside Lowell Podcast. I've got that camera right in the middle block in my view. Let's move that back there. See what happens when I have to do all these jobs. I can't multitask.
You want to take a break? There's too many sponsors there.
There's a lot. That's a bad problem, man, right?
I think I'm going to sponsor the show, too.
Johnny Dakota, Lowell City Councilor. John Dakota is joining us here in the Inside Lowell Studios. There we go. Now I got all the camera angles just right, which I should have done before I hit record.
How you been, Teddy?
I'm doing well. How are you, my friend?
It's been a while.
Yes, it has been a while. I think last time we had you here, we were...
I think about it. I was running.
You were running for, you were running for city council. I don't, I don't even think we did a debate because you...
That's right, we didn't.
You didn't. Your opponent kind of disappeared. And then I saw the election results and I understood why.
We worked hard. We worked hard.
You did. You really, I was always amazed at how hard you worked, basically, because I knew, you could just kind of tell.
The people that know me, I hate walking. I hate, I hate it.
But you look so slim and trim.
And of course, I'm sweating through the...
Listen, when you get, when you get to retirement age, buddy, you got to get out there and get active, okay?
Seven weeks, four days, and thirty-seven minutes.
You've got it all counted down, right?
I'm ready.
That was, so that was a weird time. Thank you for reminding me of that, because let me, let me see if I can get your blood boiling. You went from, you had a, you had a plan to kind of see if you could extend your stay for a little bit to help with the transition. And then one school committee meeting into announcing that plan. Boy, did that go out the, out the window really quickly, yeah?
Yeah.
How's the, how's the transition going? Your last day of work is pretty soon, as you just said. Somebody's got to be in charge of doing your job soon enough. How, has the, has your successor been named? Has the training begun?
We have hired a new transportation director. Her name is Caitlin Sherry. She's been a dispatcher, supervisor for NRT Bus Company for the last six years. So we're grooming her and she's going to do a great job. She's a young lady who's pretty smart and I think the transition is going to be quite smooth.
What did you say the name was?
Caitlin Sherry.
Caitlin Sherry, okay. And she comes with experience out in the school bus field.
Yeah, and she understands the software and, and all the other CDL business that goes along with busing and all that kind of good stuff. So, I mean, I think her business, biggest challenge will be drivers. Since September to now, Bus Company NRT has come up with actually net zero in the increase in amount of drivers. So we're, we're very dependent upon the Greater Lowell Volk drivers, who are also NRT employees, to help out with our routes. If we didn't have those drivers, we would, we would not be able to have a transportation system in Lowell.
All right. Hold on to that thought, because I'm going to get back to that when we talk about some, some school issues and, you know, a cliff that quite frankly, I don't think people see coming, but I believe it's a very real cliff and you've kind of alluded to it. But I want to start this morning's Lowell Sun, had a, had a story about Sal Lapoli, the much talked about Sal Lapoli and his Hamilton Canal Innovation District, the HCID proposal, doesn't meet what was originally signed. And there's a lot of talk about what to do with them. And yet, last night, you had a meeting, still no executive session, on the future of HCID and what to do with Sal Lapoli's new proposal for what he wants to build there. Are we ever going to actually see this come to the floor? What's going on? Why so long of a delay?
I think we were expecting probably next Tuesday. If not, it would be the following Tuesday for an executive session to talk about it. I did have a chance to glance through the article this morning. I thought it was, I liked the tall and skinny to small and fat analogy.
Kind of sounds like my body evolution since high school.
We're not going to get into that. You know, it's, it's, I find it interesting. He seems to be controlling the narrative a bit. He says that he needs Lowell and he needs to make it work. But I don't know what negotiations have happened. Obviously, it'll be discussed in executive session. But then again, I, I look at his other project in Littleton and that seems to be going quite smoothly. And the way they wanted the project is what they're getting.
Seems to have been able to do affordable housing in, in Littleton as well, where you would think in Lowell, that would be, you know, that's the easy thing, but...
But you know, obviously, you know, having, you know, I wasn't on the council when this was voted on back then. But, you know, the council voted for a twelve-story mixed-use market rate housing. And I think we need that market rate, understanding, you know, well, let's get other developers in here. Well, I mean, I will give a little bit of credit to Sal for the fact that it's not easy to get all your tiffs and highs and all this good stuff when you're trying, trying to get market rate housing. So that's a lot of money that he has to put up front. But you know what? He did sign the contract. I'm not saying that steel has come down, the materials to build all this has come down, but a deal is a deal. You know, if you want to go from fourteen to ten or eleven-story building, something that just, you know, aesthetically is pleasing to the judicial center as well as the parking garage, I think is very important. I think when you start talking about five and six-story shot and fat buildings, I'm not in favor of that at this point, and especially of a wooden frame. I still think we need to go with the steel and I'd probably be receptive to probably a ten-story project type of thing.
So that's the part that I found interesting with this morning's Lowell Sun article. And if you haven't read it, go, go read it, because it's very telling. I, I've assumed for the last several weeks, and if you've watched any of my city council interviews, I've been talking to your colleagues about this, I've assumed there's some kind of a negotiation that, you know, thirteen-story tower versus five-story stick build, there was some room and some negotiation going. And I was trying to figure out what's the sweet spot. Is it an eight-to-ten-story combination, mixed use, with some office space, some first-floor retail, and some housing component? And then I read this morning, and I don't see a guy negotiating. And while the sentence he gave to the Sun, to the reporter, Melanie Gilbert, was, "I'm, I haven't given up on this." I, he sounds to me like a guy who wants out, firing away at the prior administration. Then he fires away at the Lowell Plan for their letter. And, and he doesn't leave open the, you know, somebody who's, again, you don't want to negotiate in public, but when you're kind of, you know, drawing hard rigid lines, to me, that sounds like it's either, hey, this is all I can do, or you know what? I want out. I know I've got a contract, but, but can we, I'll make it easy for you to get me out. I'm, I'm almost getting that sense now. And if Sal, if you, if, if I'm not accurate, I'd love to have you come on and kind of go your side of, your side of things here as well.
Invite me to that. I'd like to join in on that. That should be fun.
But I read today's Lowell Sun article, is a guy who says, "I'm not giving up," and it sounds to me like, yeah, he's ready to wash his hands. And, and listen, it's tough to develop in Lowell. I will tell you firsthand, the banks aren't throwing money at you left and right.
Tell us the story, Ted.
People aren't throwing money at you left and right. And you know, unless you're one of these, you know, billionaire types, developing in Massachusetts and in Lowell can be very, very difficult. And quite frankly, anyone with that kind of money is not choosing Massachusetts. They're going elsewhere to do it.
No, excellent points. I mean, you made excellent points there. But we're also talking about the fourth largest contractor in the state of Massachusetts, Lapoli Companies. So when Sal put this together and knowing how much she was going to make on this, and you know, he wants to hit his number. Now it's 2024, and by looking at the numbers and, like I said, what steel is and the materials, he's not going to hit that number. Is he going to take a loss in this project? I don't think he's going to take a loss in this project, or he already probably would have walked away. I feel like, once again, he's trying to control the narrative here. And I think your point is well taken, is that if I'm him, I'm not even responding to Allison Blamey's letter from the Lowell Plan to us. I think that will be brought out in executive session. And I'm sure that City Manager Golden and him have talked. And Mr. Baldwin as well. And I'm looking forward to executive session. But once again, I think what the council had voted on in 2020 is something that Lapoli needs to stand behind.
So is there room for negotiation, though? In what I, you know, what I, my interpretation of the Sun story is we're not, he's not even interested in that. But in your mind, if, if he comes back with some kind of an offer, like, all right, I can give you an eight-story bill. This is what I can do. Are you willing to at least listen to that? Are you, are you willing to, to go ahead with something that isn't the five-story fat wood build?
Yeah.
I like, I love, I love your wording, by the way, the fat.
Yeah, fat, short and fat. Would I be willing to listen to Mr. Lapoli and what his next offer will be? Sure. Everybody should be open to any communication. But anything probably less than ten, I'm kind of, I'm saying no to. Because if you're going from fourteen-story to ten stories, there's a significant amount of money there in savings for him. And, you know, more money in his pocket. And plus, I think if you look at it from the judicial side of things, that's now, what? There was eight stories over there and the garage is seven, right? I believe. So I think, you know, when you're talking aesthetics and the, when you come down from the Rotary and you see that building, I mean, that's going to, I don't want a five-story building that I'm looking at. I want something that's going to shine and put forth. And I want market rate housing. I really think the city needs to get some market rate housing. We've done an excellent job in subsidized housing and affordable housing. And we're still doing it, you know, between the CBA and, and all the other organizations that are doing it. We're building like crazy right now for, for housing all over. So is Lowell doing its job to help families that, that need subsidized, subsidized housing? Absolutely. No question about it. Probably more than we've ever done, I think, in my, in my opinion. So I think we need some market rate. I think, because if you don't get that, Teddy, there's an imbalance in the city. We don't want to become a Lawrence. And no disrespect to Lawrence. But once you start losing, you know, as they say, white flight, you know, and you start losing those people that are the movers and shakers in the city and the two or three percent that make the city move, and who's going to go to the Athenian corner? The people that just have affordable and subsidized housing? Or those are the ones that have market rate, who have disposable income. They're going to go to the Athenian corner. They're going to go downtown. They're going to go to the restaurants that are going to be at the Link program in three years. So I think the next three to four years are going to be very exciting for the city. I mean, having attended the presentation by Chancellor Chen of what the Link program is, it, it was really mind-boggling, but the vision of this lady of what this is going to look like, it's staggering. It really is. But the idea of having people that have just graduated from your college to work at Draper Labs and have housing right across the street and pay them good salaries, so they can ride their bike right through Father Morrishead after we fixed that bicycle lane and, and spend money and bring back the downtown. I work on Merrimack Street, right? I'm at the Lowell Public Schools. And, and I walk out there and I'm going, we need, we need to improve this. This is not the way it used to be. We need people to go into these restaurants and fill them up. You know, to me, that's where, that's the direction we need to go. I think we are going that way. But once again, with concern Lapoli's project, I'm, I'm pretty stern about market rate housing.
I think, I think disposable income is the term. You want to bring people in of disposable income. Because you, you said white flight, but I think, is it, you're talking about wealth, wealth flight is... Because they, you know, anybody from anywhere in the world, if they have money, if they're coming into the city, I'm more than happy to have them. And I don't want to lose them. And, and I feel we have lost a ton of them. And it, you know, it's kind of a shame to watch all these immigrant groups. And, you know, it happens to some degree historically. Go back hundreds of years to Lowell. Once they accumulate some wealth, they're out in Chelmsford, they're out in Andover, they're in, Westford is kind of the hot town now, or they've been going to the Boston suburbs. We should be creating opportunities for them to stay here in Lowell. And I think that's, I think that's...
And in the last five years, that trend is continuing.
It's worsened from what I've seen.
There's no doubt about it. And we have to stop that. I think so. You know, if, if Mr. Lapoli does, and I'm kind of on your same wavelength, I think he's kind of a guy that says, listen, this is my number. If I don't get it, I'm probably walking. But with that Link program, does that entice other developers to say, hey, Lowell's doing something here. This might be something that we want to, want to dive into now that we weren't going to do a year ago?
It should. If I'm, if I'm an out-of-towner, I'm looking at what's happening over there at Link and I'm like, hey.
You know what?
Let's get in there.
Just, let's get in there. So I think, you know, as much as he's, he's holding the full house, we might have a straight flush coming up. You know what I mean?
A little poker analogy. So just before we wrap up on this, you, I'm going to guess you said this and you're informed. Next week, the executive session?
I believe it's going to be next week. If not, it would, it would be the following one. I'm pretty sure.
Tuesday, May 21st or Tuesday, May 28th?
Correct.
So that this saga will one way or another be decided?
I believe so.
Or will be in another negotiation phase?
I would hope that we make a decision.
All right. Chatting with Lowell City Councilor John Dakota. He's joining us here in the Well Point Studios. Let's get a little bit into your wheelhouse. Schools. You, you are a school employee. So at least for, what's the timeframe again?
Walking the line fandango here. Where's the ethics?
So I was wanting to talk about that. I don't know what you're at liberty to talk about and what you're not. But the, the city sent a press release out late last night. They're going to buy the St. John Dock School. The mayor, Danny Rourke, sent out an editorial to the media yesterday afternoon, basically advocating for this. And supposedly tonight, the school committee will vote on that. And then next week, the city council will vote on that. Is that a done deal?
Yeah.
It is?
Pretty sure. I'd say ninety-nine point nine percent.
Okay. School committee on board, from what you're, you know those people. You've worked for them technically?
I think the votes are there.
You think the votes are there?
Yeah.
Okay. What were the...
I was quite pleased with the price, too.
Yeah.
I thought it was...
Two-point-four, right?
I thought it was going to go around four, but two-point-four. But I think with the amount of renovations that need to be done, I mean, you're talking elevators, you know.
It needs significant work, right?
The building was built in 1950, so it needs significant work.
All right. So as a guy who's kind of been at the, in the middle of these, you know, school issues, how much space you have, modular classroom discussions, going back and forth, the Rogers School is administrative, it's schools, administrative offices, back to classrooms, et cetera. So you kind of know how this works. What's the best use for that facility? Is it what's being kind of described here as a special needs student?
Yeah, I think, I think if I'm looking at it from a financial picture, especially with the S F funds being depleted coming next year, we are right now leasing space in Chemsford for the old-day school. I believe that's $375,000 a year. I would believe that those students from that school would then be just transferred into the other schools. People are just, you know, people said, why don't we take this program, the CSA program or the adjustment program, put it there? Well, you can't do that in the school system. You can't just take special needs kids and put them into one building. There's inclusion part of it that has to, is mandated by the state.
Okay. Thank you for going there, because one of the first comments on the story that we posted, the editorial by Mayor Rourke, one of the comments on there on InsideLowell.com was from a parent of a Down Syndrome student and said, "You have no idea what integration, what doors it opens up."
Correct.
So to be clear, when you say we're going to move special needs programs in there, is the, the intent isn't to take just basically the kids that are, have some type of disability or, or challenge and put them all in one school to get them out of the things?
The, the Lowell Day School is a school that students with significant issues, that at that particular school with those particular staff is needed. All right. When you're talking a, a regular special needs student that may have language, speech problems, so that type of thing, you're not looking to put that student into that school. They need to be integrated into schools. And they're pulled out for their special program, one or two hours a day, and they go back into their classes. Those aren't the students that you want there. But I think if you're looking at it from a long-term perspective as well, if you take those, I believe, I think it's seventy students that are at the Lowell Day School. Well, you have eighteen classrooms at the Jean Doc right now. You, you would then have the ability to, to bring in students from other cities and towns and charge them. So a student that's transferred out of district, you'll look at cost of $100,000 to $125,000 per student. So the city would actually take in that money from other cities and towns around and put them into the Jean Doc program, into that particular program and, and actually make money for the city.
So how much is the city currently paying to set, to have these kids attending school in Chelmsford?
It's under, we're not paying anything. It's under, under the, the chapter seventy money that we get.
Okay.
They're, they're Lowell students. They're Lowell students that are being educated just in Chemsford location at this point. We transport them over.
Okay.
And we do get circuit breaker money from there for transportation as well as the tuition as well.
Okay. But if you had it here in Lowell, it's not going to be a cost savings based on just on those students alone?
Correct.
Because you will save the transportation money, right? Or is that, is that fully covered?
Well, this particular fiscal year, I believe Governor Healy says that ninety-five percent of the homeless transportation would be reimbursed to the, to the city. And that's a big chunk, because last year, I think I spent $400,000 and this year will be at $2 million in homeless costs. So if we can get back $1.8 million, that will help. Once again, now, now we're going back into driver's situation. Now we're going to have to hire more drivers, because the NRT handles our out-of-district students. Well, that means they're transferring our Lowell students to Chemsford. Now those students are going to come to Pride Star, who handle our Lowell contract. So now Pride Star is going to end up needing probably eight, nine more drivers in two years. Not, because the school's not going to open for at least another year for renovations, maybe even two, depending on what they have to do. But the, the cost, the benefit is, you know, not incurring that $375,000 a year and also maybe, you know, taking in students from other cities and towns and charging those towns $100,000 a year to educate their, their students.
And the, the busing.
Yeah.
So there was a long discussion last night about CDL licenses and how the city is having a hard time finding people to, to fill some of these roles with those, with those appropriate licenses. A lot of the discussion I hear about the problems with the trash and recycling pickup, my hunch is it has to do with private, if, if cities and towns can't find enough drivers, if school bus companies can't find enough drivers, I'm probably guessing neither can these private companies. And that's what's leading to some of your issues there.
Don't think of it as just Lowell. Think of it as, this is a nationwide problem.
Exactly, exactly. Which is why it'd be nice to have, you know, the, getting close to forty percent of the population that isn't working, take out the, take out the kids and the retirees, you still have a healthy...
How much time do we have here?
You still have a healthy number of workers to do some of these jobs, providing, you know, the incentive is there for them to work. But when the, when that neighborhood discussion got shot down again, you know, and I'm sure it'll come up again in a couple of years, but the neighborhood schools discussion, all well and good. Whichever side you're on, great. There's good, good points for both sides. Can the city, how much longer, from your vantage point, can the city and the school department continue to provide reliable busing for its students unless something drastically changes with the nation's economic situation and the, and the workforce situation? Are we heading to a cliff and it's all well and good? Say, no, no, we're going to keep bussing kids all over the place. You might come a point where you can't bus them, period. And that, and now they're not getting a school, period. You won't have to worry about whether they're in a neighborhood schools, whether that school is segregated, subpar, above par, blah, blah, blah. Am I, am I over-exaggerating the issue here? Or are we looking at a, a potential where you're not going to be able to promise parents that you can get their kids to a school within a couple of years?
I would say two out of the four wheels of the car are already over the cliff. We are at a stage and, you know, when you talk, transportation is not on the mind of it, a lot of educators, it really isn't. But just in my thirty years in transportation, I've never seen anything like this in my life.
Well, the assumption is, look, I, my kids are in public schools. There's a bus that will pick them up. If I get my kid to this bus stop at X hour of the day, they're getting to school and then the bus is going to bring them to the bus stop near my home, probably right in front of the home nowadays, at X hour. How often is that not happening? Is it a daily occurrence that there are kids who the buses just aren't there because of a driver shortage?
Fridays are a difficult day. Long weekend.
You get that weekend flu, right?
I always get that week. And then if the Patriots are on on Sunday night, guess what? Monday mornings are very difficult. We run a sixty-six bus system. We have forty-eight drivers. And we have the Greater Lowell Volk drivers filling in all those extra spots that we need. So without them, we would not have a system. It's, you can't run a system on forty-eight buses.
But the Volk drivers are probably, the Volk school is probably in the same situation, right? They're, do they have enough drivers? They have an abundance of drivers or are they just barely getting by?
They're just getting by. They have a, I believe they have a driver for every route, but they have no spare drivers. So then there you go. Again, one of their drivers will have to double up on a route, which then makes the children late. And not to mention, is there enough capacity on that bus to take those, those other kids? We are at major capacity on our buses, which is then, now you're getting into behavior issues. The amount of incident reports that are given to the principals this year has doubled over last year. The rides are forty-five minutes. They used to be a half an hour. Some are an hour. Some have seventy-seven elementary kids on a bus. It's, it's, it is a dire situation at this point. And the reason why I think Lowell might be even worse situation is out of the forty-eight drivers, fifteen of them I hired in 2000 when I was the contract manager for Lowell. So they don't have much longer. They're at almost retirement age themselves. And, you know, people say it, but it's an extremely difficult job being a bus driver. Extremely difficult, trying to control that many kids in, in, in the thirty-six-foot.
And you've got language issues now, right? It's not like when I went to school in Drake and everybody spoke English and whatnot. Now you've got kids newly into the country and speaking different languages, communication, I would imagine and stuff.
So difficult. It really has. Luckily, in NRT and at Pride Star, we have dispatchers that speak Spanish, which helps us, but we don't have any Portuguese-speaking help on that end.
Kamai, Creole? I would imagine you need a significant amount of that, right? Or at least one dispatcher that speaks everything?
Yep, we don't.
You don't?
We don't. So it makes it quite difficult. So if we don't know where that child's going, then they go automatically go to the Moody's School, where we try to go through the whole process of where they're from. Sometimes they lose their bus card, especially the kindergarten as a first grader. So, yeah, it's been a very trying situation. It's not uncommon to have ten to twenty students being brought to the Moody's School in the afternoon, because the parents aren't there. They don't understand that we don't let our kindergarteners and first graders off unless there's a guardian there. So that's difficult to convert, communicate to them.
Doesn't sound very equitable to those twenty students, does it?
No, it isn't.
If you went to neighborhood schools, how many buses could you reduce?
We, we could do it with forty-eight buses.
You have forty-eight drivers. You go to neighborhood schools, you can do with forty-eight buses.
But...
But you need fifty-six. Is that the number? What was the number you said?
Yeah, but right now, what, that, to do it safe, safer, sixty-six routes is the way to go. Because right now, we have drivers who do three schools in the morning, three schools in the afternoon. Well, there are no more bathroom breaks for those drivers in the morning. It's hit that one school, you're starting the route, the second school. It's because we run on the three...
Big water gallon, just like Jim Carrey in Jeff Daniels and Dumb and Dumber. Problem solved. It's equitable.
Yep.
Sorry, that's the sarcastic SOB in me coming out. But, you know, are we really making life better for students? Or are we just kind of making life better for advocates?
And, and I was, I actually felt bad for Counselor Scott when she brought up the motion, because it wasn't her intention to, it's quite disturbing. We really wanted to get together with the school committee, but... We, we really wanted to get together with the school committee, but I think after looking, you know, twenty-twenty being hindsight, you know, I think we probably should have gone through the school committee first and to have an ad hoc subcommittee to understand what we were trying to do here. This isn't a per se neighborhood school, uh the newest scenario we have is a four zone. So it, what it does is we're trying to cut out the bridges because the routes are fairly short. But try going on Bridge Street at three o'clock in the afternoon. You're there for fifteen minutes, just sitting on the bridge. Or trying to get to the bridge from Merrimack Street or Prescott Street or East Merrimack Street. You can't do it. Aiken Street Bridge, same way. School Street Bridge, same way. Rourke Bridge, same way. It, our bridges are hurting the transportation system. We need to keep, try to break that up. So if we looked at it from a lower Highlands, a Highlands type of thing, you know, it's not a neighborhood. I mean, you're still a mile away, you know, you're looking at South Lowell and all of Belvedere, that would be a zone. So it's not per se a neighborhood, but it breaks it down, so it's, it's, it's a closer, closer proximity to the schools that you'd be able to pick from. You know, and, and I, and I did appreciate a couple of constituents saying it, it's about equity. So schools need to be the same, you know, and I'm not shy to, to say, you know, that people will come in the door and say, I want the Pine Arts, I want the Daily School because that's the best school in the city. We shouldn't be hearing that. It should be, oh, well, you're going to our school? Oh, it's just as good as the Daily. We, our schools need to be the same, they have to be, you know, you, you can't have that stereotype of a school not being that good. Cause you read it on social media in the Lowell Live Forum, what's a good school? How do you, you know, do you really wanna answer that? About, uh, well, don't go to this school, don't go to this school. And, and then, especially in the last five years, we've brought in some very good educators on the administrative side. Some really good principals are working in the schools right now and, and are, and are making a difference. You know, I look at the Robinson School, Bridget Dowling is the principal there, that school's turned around. I would had, I would have no problem sending my student, my child there to the Robinson School. I would, because it all depends on the administration, you know? Look at our superintendent, he was the principal of the Daily School, send your kids to the Daily School, Liam Skinner is awesome. Rob Doyle's awesome, well, Rob Doyle's just retired too. So now you have a brand new administration. Hopefully they continue on what Skinner and Doyle had, had produced for all those years. But I just don't like hearing this school is better than this school because this.
Well, what's funny, I'm going back to the equity thing, is that the, the school I hear the most, like, get your kids out of there, it's a train wreck. No, no disrespect to anybody at that school, cause I know people and they're trying like, this is the Riley, which happens to be smacked in the middle of the city's quote-unquote best and wealthiest neighborhood.
Now you have a new principal who was interim last year and this, now he's now gonna be permanent, Ron Fusco. The atmosphere, you walk, you know what, it's funny, when I walk into schools, I feel the atmosphere of the schools. You know, you walk into a school, you can see that how vibrant it is, or, or i- if it isn't inviting. Riley School's gonna make a big turnaround, I guarantee it, because you got good administration. And you know what, then they bring in the teachers that they've worked with to make a better unit. It's all about the administration and the caliber of educators that you have. So your schools can be the same, you know, it's, how long have we heard this, Teddy? For twenty, thirty years, I'm not going to that school, I heard it, you know, it's awful. It shouldn't be that way. We should be able to say, yeah, go to that school, good school, good school, good school, but we're not. And we need, and I think that's the biggest challenge for Superintendent Skinner, I really do.
As I listen to you talk about these school issues, uh, you, once you retire, you can have a lot of free time. You can, you can serve both on the school committee and city council, correct? Are you allowed to serve on both?
Hmm, no.
You're not?
I don't believe I can do the school committee and.
For council?
And the council. Though I've been on the phone with the Alex Commission about ten times in the last six months, so.
Well, you're speaking as a school employee, not as a city councilor. But the, the thing that bugged me, just to wrap up the discussion about the, the neighborhood schools thing again, um, I understand that perhaps Counselor Scott and Mayor Roach could have, you know, worded it to include s- the school committee on the discussion, but you brought that substitute motion up anyway, and that got shot down too. There is no, you mention, you mention any type of change and the opposition is automatic, just, you know it's coming. And you know where it's coming from and whatnot. And yet I, I ultimately, I feel bad for the kids who are on these buses for forty-five minutes plus a day, who are not getting picked up now because there's a shortage that I'm telling you is gonna get worse, and I think you just confirmed it for us. It's not gonna get better unless we see drastic system-wide change in the, in the entire country. And I, I still see kids that are struggling to learn and I, you know, whatever was happening in nineteen eighty-nine, the schools may have been segregated, right? But you didn't have three-quarters of the kids not up to grade level reading in there. You know, I, I, so I, I, I know the world has changed, but are, are we, have we really made the kids' lives any better?
You know, I, I I would hope that um the city councillors and school committee members and other people would, would actually understand what a, the consent decree has done. I don't wanna go off topic here, Teddy, too much, but you know, when you talk about our two-zone system that we have, we're on the premise that we have to be plus or minus ten percent minority slash non-minority. Okay, so you go to the Merklin School today, you're ninety percent minority. You go to the Stark Loser School, you're ninety-two percent minority. Where's the balance? The balance is, it's gonna be by the zone. Now go to the Wang, the Pawtucket, sixty percent non-minority. So after you put all these percentages together in that zone, you're okay. But if you look at it from a school perspective, where's the diversification? Where is it? It isn't there. You're trying to tell me that the diversification at the Merklin School and Stark Loser School? Look at the Robertson School, seventy-five percent minority. So when we look at it from a, from what the consent decree told us to do and making sure that the, these two zones uh plus or minus ten percent, sure, they are, after you put them all together. But as a school i- in itself, we're not close.
So how does going to four zones change that or alter that?
It, it's actually puts it almost within, it's, it's within the consent decree, plus or minus, with the four zones. And making it that way, it'd be, it, it would work. I, we have to break a couple of streets, it really come to the minutia of it, you know, you know.
But you've done, you've, you've actually, that's your job.
Yeah, and, and we've uh.
Back when you weren't even an expert, back in twenty seventeen, you, you were not an expert on buzzing, but now you are.
Rebecca Duda, who took over as the Family Resource Center, she, she helped with this project. Uh, Vero Roberts in the, in dated department helped us, I was three. Uh, it put together this four, this four-zone scenario, which is an excellent, is probably the best one. A lot better than the ones that I even came up with. Uh, but nobody really seems to want, have the appetite to, to listen to it. Um, but I think they're gonna have to in the year because like I said, the NRT basically from September to now is net zero in the amount addition, additional drivers. Which brings us to the point, where do those drivers come from? Where did they come? Why don't we have, why do we have this problem now? Well, before the pandemic, you had the retiree who was looking for something to do, gone. They were still worried about the pandemic, they don't wanna deal with any of that. Then you used to have the mom who had a one-year-old and a three-year-old. They would just put them on the bus, save the daycare. Now their mom's working on a computer at home, doing a job part-time and the kids are still at home. So you've lost two big populations of drivers, they're gone. So where do you go next? My thing is, I think you have to go with all the people that are coming into Lowell. They don't speak English, well, teach them English, English. You know what, you got all these people at the ICC C Center that you're trying to find jobs for, uh during the day, are they teaching them English? Of, listen, when the Greeks came to Lowell, when the French people came to Lowell, what do we have to do? We have to learn the English language, don't we? I think that's the way to go, and I think these people wanna work, they wanna work, teach them the language, you know? The RMV doesn't help a lot, it's strictly English right now, uh they don't do any translations, they don't do any testing uh other than in, in English, so that I don't foresee that changing for a while. So we need to do our part in making sure, you know, I think the Lowell Ed- Adult Education does a great job over there. She's got like, Betty McCarr- McCarran has like seventy, eighty adults in their classes at night. You know, that's where I think we have, the population's gonna come from, put new bus drivers. Will it? I don't know.
And, and yet that creates an issue though, because you know, the CDL license discussion last night that we've kinda touched on. You start to run into things when you're putting people on a school bus, there's, well, I, I need to do a Cory check to go on a field trip with my kid. As a parent, um, we, you can't just put anybody on a bus, how do you do a Cory check? Great, we teach everybody. How do we, how do we know? So, so this is a challenge, and again.
No doubt.
Ninety-nine percent of the people are, are great, wonderful people, but can you as a school committee, right? Ninety-nine percent of the parents are great, wonderful parents, but before somebody gets on a bus to go on a field trip, they go through a Cory check.
They do.
Substitute teach, uh paraprofessional, gym teacher, janitor, whatever, everybody goes through. So the bus driver's gonna have to go through a Cory check too.
And they do.
But that's why I think is, you know, kinda looking towards the ICC and the people living there as your saviors. It isn't gonna help with schools, it may help you, you know.
Maybe some other.
Driving a vegetable truck or a meat truck.
Like Cory, like Cory Robinson had brought up last night, you know, looking for CDL drivers, like in DP WUs or that type of thing. Maybe that's somewhere to go, but just falling back again on that school bus driver shortage. I, I'm not optimistic, I'm really not, because there's always, in the summer, you'll lose three or four drivers, then something won't come back in September. But are they gonna be able to get those three or four trained? Because they've made it so, like, the RMV has made it so difficult to get your CDL license with a passenger endorsement. You need a bachelor's degree to pass. Out of ten people that go, two people pass on their first try. They go at least two or three times before they pass. It's that involved now, not like, you, it, back in the past, it wasn't as involved, but it is involved now.
Don't be so hard on the RMV, their, their primary purpose now isn't getting people to get the proper licenses and registrations, it's registering people to vote. That's their number one task, and boy, is it easy to do that, but.
Yeah.
And sorry, I digress.
That was nice, you did well.
Last, this, well, that one's for Jack Mitchell, who's, I, I, I water things down on the podcast.
You know, he's gonna comment on that.
No, no, Jack, uh residential parking, man, people are still kvetching about that. And I, and I get it's a sharp increase, right? You were paying ten dollars for a sign that costs fifty dollars. Uh, you know, you're welcome for all of us, the business people and everybody else who's subsidizing that through the years. But I get it's a big jump to ten dollars a year to ten dollars a month. I'm still scratching my head though, so, so let me see if I got this right. I can pay ten dollars a month and have a guaranteed parking spot right in front of my house. Not, not in a city garage like the downtown residents have, where they still may have to walk one block, two blocks, right? To get to their house, their, their downtown condo, downtown apartment or whatever. I can have a parking spot right in front of my house for ten dollars a month and they're still bitching. Boy, does that scream Lowell to me. And, and I get it, it's a big jump, you went from ten to a hundred twenty, but ten dollars a month, you got a guaranteed parking spot. You don't have to pay that money. Those people subsidizing that loss for the Parking Enterprise Fund through the years, they don't have a choice, that's coming out of their tax dollars. They don't have a choice, you can say no to that guaranteed parking spot.
I found.
That's me being the tenth, the twelfth city council.
I understand, and I, and it's a drastic in- increase. And that's why I was kinda taken aback by the public didn't even come to talk, there wasn't anybody against it. I would, I would, I thought there would have been a line out, city council chambers saying, this is ridiculous, we're going from this to this. But we didn't get a, really any pushback from the public and, you know, at.
That's cause they had a parking spot right in front of their house, they didn't wanna.
Yeah, but that's the one that says two thousand and eighteen on it, you know what I mean?
You don't wanna leave that parking spot.
But uh I think we're, you know, and looking at what the future holds for the Parking Enterprise Fund. It's not good, Teddy. No, we're already looking at a deficit. And I took a look at the forecast that uh Mr. Baldwin had put out, and in five years, it's much worse shape. So how, how do we cure this? You know, are we gonna continuously hit the public with, well, I, that one twenty, next year it might be two hundred, who knows? But this Parking Enterprise Fund, there needs to be serious discussion on how we can, and we're looking at the two million dollar deficit. How do you, how do you make that up? You're not gonna make it all up in that, you're not, cause those hundred and twenty, they're not gonna buy, they're gonna keep the signs up from last year. And they're gonna hope that the city will enforce it, you know, and start taking down signs and fining people, but um, pretty big city and not enough uh parking people out there to uh.
It's a good deal though, ten bucks a month for a spot, you know, that you, if you, again, if you move your car out in a snowstorm, it's gonna get plowed and cleared and salted and, and then, you know, Councilor Getcher said this last night. It's not a bad deal, folks, I know it went up, but it's ten bucks a month.
I gotta tell you though.
For a guaranteed parking spot.
You said guaranteed. I bought my house thirty-two years ago on Viola Street. There might have been eight, nine cars on the street at night. I have people parking in front of my house that I have no idea who are. Viola Street up and down on both sides has cars on it. So when you say you're guaranteed, then you gotta call the police, you gotta get them towed, you gotta do that. We're at a point where we're bursting in our neighborhoods that, you know, I'm not sure if that's even guaranteed now that you got a parking space out front. Some of these people just will park anywhere they can find a parking spot. We're, we're so dense right now, i- it, it's incredible, it really is, but I agree with you, but I, it, it is a sticker shock when it comes to a hundred and twenty. But like you said, I think the point is that we're, you know, not bad if we get that parking spot in front of y'all for ten bucks.
It's one pack of cigarettes a month, ten bucks.
Well, you do have a way with analogies, you know?
It would be incredibly frustrating if somebody's in that spot, but that situation exists now anyway. Regardless of what your cost is, that situation exists, you could choose not to pay it and then you, you know, you you don't have to worry about that hundred and twenty, but you're still gonna worry about where you're gonna park on your street. So I, I, I get it, I appreciate the, you know, this, the fact that it's sticker shock.
It is.
But in grand scheme of things, it's not a bad deal, folks, you know, the downtown people pay now, what are they paying now, eighty, ninety bucks a month?
Yep.
And they're walking, and they're still walking blocks.
That's right, they are, they are, so uh.
And they're not guaranteed a spot either, they, they better pray that garage didn't get full because of something else.
Well, listen, we've seen a huge increase in the amount of students coming into the school system. Well, mom and dad, us, the family live in somewhere, right? And they're living with other family members and, and, you know, it's, it's become a very difficult situation. Um, I'm, I think, I think we're gonna have, we, we really need a deep discussion concerning the Parking Enterprise Fund because I really am worried about where this is gonna go. Cause I think it's just, if we continue this year after year, we're just gonna heap the amounts of increases onto the taxpayer, we really are, and I don't see any other way unless we, what do we do? Yeah, you wanna raise your other taxes as well as property taxes that are gonna come and get, get with nine percent every two years? No, we don't want that, that happen.
The good thing for you is you have plenty of time to worry about where the Parking Enterprise Fund is going, because in, how, how long were you, before you're done again?
Seven weeks and five hours.
Okay, yeah, cause we chopped away those forty-eight minutes doing this podcast, but you won't have to worry about the fact that there aren't enough buses to get kids to the equitable schools.
Time I've been here.
John Dakota, Lowell City Council, it's always good to talk, a lot of, a lot of good detail there and I, and I hope people pay attention to the busing crisis discussion we have because that's gonna throw everything else out the window if and when it.
Yeah.
You know, the worst-case scenario starts to come.
Always a pleasure talking to Teddy.
Alright, take care.
You bet.
Thank you to Council Dakota, thank you for joining us here on this Inside Lowell Podcast, Inside Lowell. If Lowell is your home, this is your place.